Ready, Sal? For tape?
I see. Good. It's 5:15. We'll call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody that's in the audience. Will you please stand and recite the pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to be board norms. Who has those in front? Terry, would you like to read those again?
The board developed norms are the decisions were based on the board's strategic plan, its mission, and what's best for students. The board will act as stewards of tax dollars. Board members will complete foundation work to be prepared for meetings. Meetings will be efficient. All perspectives will be voiced and heard, and all board members will maintain a professional decorum.
Thanks, Terry. Is there any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none. Moving to consent agenda. Motion to approve. Motion by Brenda, seconded by Mindy. Any discussion? Hearing none. Assuming roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving to the regular agenda. We have nothing under recognition or correspondence. Moving to C. Reports gearing up for kindergarten report. Vicky and Peggy, would you like to come forward?
Hello. I'm Peggy Van Dell, and this is my fourth year of teaching in the Gearing Up for Kindergarten program. I along with Valerie Ford as the co-teacher and Sadie Leck as the parent educator. And we have three paras from the school system that help us out in the classroom and offering childcare for families. This program is so wonderful. It's a great program that is developed from the NDSU Extension Service. It helps parents and children get ready for school. It gives the parents tools and ideas to help their child be successful in the school setting. It gives them hands-on activities that they can take home and work on. And it also helps them to see that all things can be turned into a learning situation. As you're driving in the car, as you're sitting at the table, all those things can be turned into learning-type activities. The parents are given a pre and a post-evaluation that they sit down and do with the children during our class time. It helps them to see where their child is at and what they need to know for kindergarten. It also helps the Extension Service know where they can add and change things. For the children, it's a great activity because it gives them the readiness skills they need as they prepare for their first year at school. Helps them learn to follow directions, following routines, listening and responding skills. Helps them with social activities, group settings, and then of course, the academics. Our program runs for 10 weeks. It could run for up to 16, but we have decided here to run it for 10. 16 gets to be a little long. And it runs from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. The first 30 minutes of the session is a center time. So we set up four areas in which the parents directly work with the kids. It can be a literacy center, a math center, science, or small motor skills, sensory skills. At each center, there is a table tent that has the directions for the parents and then the rationale. Why are we doing one-to-one correspondence? What is this helping the child learn? It's a great activity for the parents to work directly with them. And again, learning how all things can be turned into learning activities for them. Then the parents break off and go to their parent session. And the children, Valerie and I, then do the individual sessions with the kids, class time. We have circle time, which consists of calendar and music activities. And then we turn it into a focus activity based on what the parent lesson is. So if it's a reading lesson, then we do letters and writing their letters, identifying their letters, all of that. Then the children, we have a story time. Again, sitting and listening and then being able to answer questions. And then there's a snack time. We're fortunate to have snacks available for the kids. And that is a good social time for the kids. That gives them time to learn to wait their turn, not everybody talking at once, giving them time to learn their manners. We always do the please and thank you bit. And then we finish out with another specific activity. So a math or reading or whatever focus we're doing. Then the last 10 minutes is a closing time. We do a little door prize and a good listener award. And then when the parents come back, there's a library checkout time. So that's a good thing that, you know, we know all parents have books at home, but the kids like to, I have a book to take home today. So the parents, when they break out into their individual sessions, they have things such as early math skills, raising a reader, brain development, sleeping and eating habits, learning styles, helping the child to become responsible and independent, and then their social and emotional skills. And then the last session is a parents' role in school success. So that's a very good topic for the parents to have. They receive handouts on the discussion and also tip cards that they can kind of use throughout the time. They finalize their time together by doing a take-home activity. And it can be anywhere from a little file folder game that they start with, learning the letters. And there might be three letters. The first session is a rocket launching into letters. And they have a three letters position, and then the middle letter's missing. And they have to try to figure out what that middle letter is. So just things like that are their take-home activities. Then the parents close with questions and wrap up, and then they come and get their children and do the library checkout. And then we discuss anything during that time or also during the center time with them. I would just like to close with a parent testimony I had this fall. It was so cool because I saw a family that we had had last year in the mall. And the little boy was a little nervous, you know, seeing me again. But they, mom goes, he wants to talk to you. So he's showing me a picture he had drawn and everything. And early, when they were in the session, I had discussed with them, your child might not be ready for kindergarten. It's, you know, it's your decision, but he can't hold his pencil, he doesn't know his letters, maybe this isn't the time to send him. And he did have a summer birthday, so it was, and they said, yeah, we're kind of thinking that. But we wanted to try the program and see where this would lead. And she was so happy, they did decide to send him. And he's, from her perspective, is doing so well and said that this program, the Gearing Up for Kindergarten program, was the jumpstart he needed. It was what, just that little push to give him, hey, I'm interested, this is cool, I want to do this, I want to be able to do that. And they were just very appreciative of the program. They were so totally thankful that it was there and that they were able to attend it. So, any questions?
Any question? Mindy?
Who, what are your, who are your target students for this? I mean, is there some category of?
It's open to everyone. When they come in to register for kindergarten, then Amy will give them information on it and try to stress that, you know, this is, it's a free program, you know, take advantage of it. And we have a variety. We have some kids who have been to preschool and they're used to the knowing how to sit and listen and all of that. And then we have some who it's a brand-new situation. So, yeah, we have a wide variety.
You might have mentioned it earlier, Peggy. What are the numbers that were in there?
It's varied. Our first year, we had 18 kids. Last year, we had 35 that were registered. Not everybody comes every night, but we've had up to 35 registered. And the very first year that Jamestown Public Schools did the program, it was ran in the summer, and they did it for two consecutive weeks. I was not involved at that point. Then it was decided that wasn't probably the best way to go. So then we went to, once a week for 10 weeks.
Any other questions? Bob?
You might have mentioned this. Who does the parent component?
Sadie Leck does.
Sadie, oh, that's.
Rob, you had a comment?
I was just going to comment about the costs, just so people understand. The state funds every district right now for one class. And all of our costs are covered through those, through that amount that's provided through the state. And we actually, just earlier, actually about a week ago, or not even a week ago, got approved for that second class. So we can get up into those 30s again this next year because we do have a successful program and they're willing to provide us that other class. So we'll have another $3,300 to provide for the program. So, very good thing.
Any other questions? Not? Okay, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to number two, health committee report. Bob or Diane? I guess Bob. Or refer to Diane?
Yeah, Diane will take it. I think you've got a report in your Dropbox that, I put this together from some information we're given every month on health insurance. The important thing to remember when you're looking at the health insurance fund is that the negotiated agreement requires us to have a four, maintain a four-month fund balance. So the important figure is down at the bottom where it says four-month fund balance. And as long as, as that is more than up above where it says four months' expenses. Those are the, we have to make sure that our four-month fund balance is greater than the last four months' expenses. That's in the negotiated agreement. And there are, there are times when the fund will fall below. We used to have, we used to be required to maintain a six-month balance. That was changed in the last round of negotiations. There were times, especially during the summer, where we would fall below that. But we'd make it up as the year went on. And, but that's, that's the bellwether. That's where we see how we're doing financially. So you can see on this, start at the top, the last four months' expenses, you can see they're up considerably from last year. Part of that, we could slough off to the fact that we've added about 30 new members, starting with the 2015 plan, except that I don't think they would have been enrolled by the time these numbers are out. Right, Sally? Yeah. So it really is indicative of the new members. We haven't started, I think they would have started in October. Is that right? September 1st? Okay. And you can see we do have September and October in here, but they wouldn't have impacted it that greatly. So that's, that's one thing that we're going to have to watch as time goes on. You can see that the last, that the revenue from the last four months is fairly close to the revenue from last year, which is, we're up a little bit, which is to be expected. And you can also see that just as a point of concern, the revenue is quite a bit less than expenses. So we're going to have to watch that. The other thing that you need to be aware of, it's on the next page if you go forward. When you look at the four-month revenue, whether it's in 2015 or 2014, we don't collect much revenue in the summer months because the district puts the money in during the nine months of the school year. The participants, the members, the teachers, the support staff, their premiums are all paid. Their part of the premium is all paid from September to May as well. So during the summer, the district doesn't collect much revenue. So in July and August, which would be this fiscal year, not much revenue was collected. So the, the revenue will go up considerably, and I guess we'll just have to keep an eye on expenses. But that, in a nutshell, that's kind of where we're sitting at so far with health insurance. I think we're going to want to do this again in a few months so that we can take a good look at, at the last four months' expenses and overall expenses and see how revenue is keeping up with that. So, any questions?
Bob, is the fiscal year for the health, is that for the school year?
Same.
Same, okay. Any other questions for? None? Thank you. Moving on to number three, superintendent's 2014-15th Annual Report. You want to highlight on that, Bob, or just for information?
I don't have any highlights other than if there's questions, I can certainly answer them. It's, as you know from, you know, other, other times we've done this, it's a very comprehensive report, so.
I'd like to add, Bob, before you, I'd just like to add that there's a lot of good information in there that you usually, board members usually don't get through the year, that it's, I mean, a good analogy of what has happened through the year and to read, go through that. So, Bob?
Just like to thank Mr. Leck for the hours he must have spent putting this together. It's much appreciated.
By Mr. Leck, we mean Amy, Sally, Michelle.
The whole staff.
Everybody but me. I did the foreword. That's true. But a lot of work does go into the, it's very true, a lot of work goes into it. It doesn't necessarily happen from me, but an awful lot of work goes, goes into this. So it is, I think it's a great document. I know a lot of districts don't do something like this. I think it's something that. Amy and Sally's report? But, but I, you know, it's a great place for this information so it can be found very easily. And I think it's a great document. So again, something that not a lot of people do, but I think it's valuable that Jamestown has done this report for so long.
Okay, moving to four. Oh, Mindy? Sure? Okay. Moving to number four, superintendent's report.
Just to touch on a few things in here, we do, wanted to make you aware that Officer Nick Hardy is taking a new position in the Police Department. He'll no longer serve as our SRO. I think he's done a wonderful job for us since the inception of this program. We will certainly miss him. But he is, we can never begrudge somebody going and taking on new challenges. And we wish him the best as he moves forward for the district. Excuse me. I think it's important to know that we are going to be a part of that process for the, for finding and hiring a new person. Now, that's not a contract, obviously, that we hold. That's, you know, that's a police officer. But we do pay 75% of the cost, and that's contracted. So we do have, you know, some, some influence in that process, which we appreciate. And Officer Hardy is going to continue to provide the DARE program for us. And in the interim, I think it's important that we know, it's not that we don't have an SRO. We have the ability to, as we did before, to get those services. It just maybe isn't always going to be Officer Hardy. And then in the interim, it's going to be a collection of people and people as we need them, and they'll help us out. But the hope is that at the beginning of the new year, we have a new person hired. A new person can start right away. I appreciate that, that the Police Department has maximized our school calendar. There's a big chunk of time there that we don't have school in session because of the holidays. So that'll be, that'll be a very limited impact from the loss of Nick to the beginning of a new person. But I would like to bring him out, Officer Hardy, and whoever the replacement SRO is in the January meeting. And I think, I think it's appropriate if the board would thank Nick for, for the program and what he's done. And then, and to invite the new officer on board too, so you have a chance to see him or her, get a chance to know who they are. I went through a couple of different policy updates, recommendations. I won't go through any of those unless you have questions on them. The one thing I will say when we get to Policy FGA and your agenda, I would just recommend that you make a motion to approve a first reading of Policy FGA and its corresponding board regulations and exhibits. I don't believe you'd need to do them all separately, just in the essence of time. You certainly could if you choose to, but, but you do, I don't believe you have to. I think that's the way to handle that. We are involved in a vocational rehab grant. It's a, or at least we're hoping to apply, I should say. Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. Some of these grant funds became available. I explained a little bit about that funding stream there. I don't know how important that is. But essentially, what we did was put a grant team together, educators, administrators, board members, parents, to create an application to access these funds. You know, we're looking to, for a few different opportunities. One, increase opportunities for high school students to receive work readiness training, things like soft skills. Increase opportunities for high school students to receive work experiences. And then increase opportunities for students from the outline communities to access the Jamestown Transition House. Really, this grant started with the realization that we wanted to do more in terms of work experience and workforce training. In the past, if you're familiar, we had had more work experience, workforce experience training. Excuse me, work experience. But that program kind of went by the wayside when, when an individual left our district. And we absorbed those responsibilities through other staff members. And it, as you know, when you absorb jobs, it can never be done to the same degree as it was done when somebody had that sole responsibility. And so I think over time, that has diluted the ability to access that program to the degree that we would like it to see. And so what this grant would do is allow us to bring that back. The workforce training also, obviously, like I said, the focus on soft skills, other workforce training needs. I think as you visit the business community, they would say the same thing. You know, when we have kids coming into the workforce, there are skills that we would like them to be a little bit better at. And if the school can facilitate some of those things, I think that's great. The Transition House kind of became a different opportunity for us as we looked for this grant, looked through this grant. The Transition House, in the past, had been just for Jamestown Public School students. Those students that are our responsibility beyond 18, as they go up to age 21, students with special needs that aren't, that need additional support beyond the typical high school education. And this provides us a lot of different opportunities to coach those kids. And then what we've seen, or one of the limitations, I suppose, of having a program that's just for Jamestown Public students is if we don't have as many students, it's less efficient. We saw that in this last year where, really, we didn't have any Jamestown Public School students in the program. But we did offer it, open it up to some area schools. And as a district, we generated revenue, $100,000 about, for, for running the program. That, and it got us thinking that it really, not only could schools benefit, but as a district, we could benefit by sustainability. If we allow for other school districts to access this program, it, it helps to sustain the program for the benefit of our kids. So the idea behind this grant would be supporting transportation for other districts to the Transition House, assuming we have slots available. Obviously, slots would be determined for Jamestown Public School students first. For example, say there's, in that year, it really depends on the needs of the students. But say there's 10 slots available and six Jamestown Public School students. We would then open it up if other students want to participate in the program. And this grant would help them fund their transportation costs. I think it's, as I mentioned in my report, I think the Transition House is really a jewel of our district. And I think anything we can do to help to sustain it, proliferate the program, I think is, is wonderful. So that's the overall, overall overview of that grant. It is a two-year grant, but the grant started in July. So we're working to access some of the funds for the rest of this year and really hit in the next year. We also submitted, Mike Armitage and I submitted what's called a Build Grant. It's a grant to the Education Technology Council. And basically, what this grant would do is provide us with half of the cost towards what we were doing already in year three of our wireless connectivity initiative. Year three was our, were our elementary schools. And if we get this grant, we could, if we match that 13.5, we get the other 13.5 to do it a year early. So you spend 13 to get 27. It seems like a pretty good deal. So if we are, I outline what that is. It's 65 access points for that grant. Maybe at a future date, we can, you might want to, once things are finalized with what they're now calling ESSA, the reauthorization of, you know, I've been a superintendent, you know, it feels like a long time, you know, over 10 years that we've been waiting for. We've been waiting for the reauthorization of ESEA for as long as I've been a school administrator about. And so it's, it's nice to see that, that this is finally something that's getting done. Probably the keys to take away, there's a lot of information in there. And like I said, when things are finalized, we'll, I could give you a more detailed report. But really, what's important to know, some key takeaways anyway, repeal of AYP. That would no longer be a program, replaced with state determination. The state would determine what, what, what that accountability system is. So that, as it should, looks, would look different in Texas than it is, than it does in North Dakota. Would look different in New York City than it does in Carrington, as it should. So that's, that's a positive. Really, and I see another shift in a lot of language from accountability and, you know, the blame and shame philosophy to support. That idea that, that, that there, that there needs to be a greater level of support for schools and not just blame and shame. So I think there's some very positive things there. And not, and I've, I've had this conversation with the board before. No Child Left Behind did some positive things. It made us focus on data. It made us focus on subsets more than we had in the past. And we needed to do that in education. But the ideology behind No Child Left Behind, as we all know, has been flawed. And so it's nice to see this finally coming to the forefront in, at our, at the federal level, so. Last thing, app update. We had about the same number of downloads, but what I'm seeing is about double the amount of, of updates. And to me, what that means is people are using the app more. And there's still more work that we need to do, though. We need to train our parents, we need to get our, all of our teachers trained on how to use the notification systems. And all those things are coming. But, but all in all, it's, it's, it's still been a process that's gone very, very well. And as we get into it more, it really, the goal for us should be to double that number by the beginning of school next year. That's what I'm really hoping to see, is instead of 1,800, we're looking at 3,600 downloads by the beginning of school next year. That's kind of what I've targeted to see. Unless there's questions, I can.
Any questions? Well, you answered my question. I was wondering what the optimum number would be, but 3,600 is.
Optimum number would be every parent, every community member, every student. But that would be the optimum number. But, but I think with what the app can do, I think to have, to double what we have right now wouldn't be, in my opinion, insurmountable to do. But we have to get out and talk to our parents and train our teachers. Those are all things that we need to do if we can expect that to happen. We can't just, it isn't just going to happen without us being involved in the process.
Gail?
Can there be like an online instruction thing for it, or?
I'm glad you brought that up. That's actually one of the things we're talking about doing is, is using screen casts. I don't know if you've seen that before, but it would, the ability to record in video, and somebody would be able to walk people through the steps of how do you set your school? How do you set your own child's notifications? So when you receive, when your child dips below a C, that you get notified. How can you change it? So I want to know when it's a B. How can you change the, or set it up so when, when your child dips below the lunch balance, that you get a notification? Or, you know, for, I'll just give you an example with my own kids. If they drop a grade, a grade letter, anytime they drop a grade letter, their grade drops from a B to a C, from A to a B, C to a D, whatever, then I get notified. Yeah. I'm glad you brought that up. That's actually one of the things we're talking about doing is, is using screencasts. I don't know if you've seen that before, but it would, the ability to record in video and somebody would be able to walk people through the steps of how do you set your school? How do you set your own child's notifications? So when you receive, when your child dips below a C, that you get notified. How can you change it? So I want to know when it's a B. How can you change the, or set it up so when, when your child dips below the lunch balance, that you get a notification? Or, you know, for, I'll just give you an example with my own kids. If they drop a grade love, a grade letter, anytime they drop a grade letter, their grade drops from a B to a C, from A to a B, C to a D, whatever, then I get notified. And I can go in, if they have missing assignments, shoots me a notification and I can, I can check to see what's happening. First day I downloaded it, there was a missing assignment, so. I don't know if my son likes it as much as I do, but...
Any other comments, or? None. Moving on to old business, any old business? Hearing none, moving into new business. We have nothing under activities, building and grounds, curriculum. Number four, finance, audit services and financial statement preparation, preparation recommendation.
Yeah. A few meetings ago, on November 2nd, the board had received a report from Lindemon regarding the financial statement preparations. They were audited, even as auditors, they were audited. And that's one of the, the issues, the deficiencies that came out is, is the ability to provide both the financial statement preparation and the audit. The board had asked that I research options and, and explore what other districts do and make a recommendation. Sally and I both, you know, looked in different ways, looked at this issue. We did get some, or at least one, one estimate. And we do feel like that's on the low side in terms of total cost, even though they give you a range. I think the range, the high side of the range is on the low side of what it would likely cost, just based on the amount of services that they would be expected to do, the, the time burden of doing that. As we looked and talked with other school district, school districts, the standard practice has been accepting that deficiency. For one auditing firm to conduct both the financial statement preparations and the audit services, as we talked about before, our staff has the, the skill level, the competencies to do it. They would need additional training to do it, and it would be a significant time burden. As they were doing those things, they wouldn't be doing something different. We do have confidence in Shower and Associates to provide both the financial audit and the preparation of the financial statements. I do not see a concern. I think that relationship has been very positive throughout the time that they've done those services for us. It would be my recommendation that you continue along in accepting the financial statement findings in the audit report. The district had decided to accept the degree of risk associated with the district not preparing its own financial statements. So that is, that would be my recommendation for you.
Bob?
So moved.
So moved. Motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Gail. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to letter B, their approval of the resolution of the Defense of Sales Tax Bonds. Sally, do you want to touch on that?
You had draft documents on this afternoon at 3:00 from Public Financial Management Group. I received the final. What I did was, the first one is just a board memo explaining in June, you, you know, you made a motion and, and approved a process to move forward with paying off the bond of the high school and middle school. Okay? And on that day of that meeting, the, they called me and said the slugs, what they call slugged, which is state and local government securities, that's a short terminology for that, was closed. And so they would let me know how they're open. And so we can go through the process of paying off the bond on December 15th. With approval of this resolution, the funds will, they will take the funds and put them in an escrow to pay off the high school, middle school. So obviously, I mean, you know, it's a good thing to do, that debt is off, and put them in escrow not only, you know, earns interest. I mean, the debt is removed from the school district and plus it earns interest, so it even reduces it. There's a whole lot, the escrow agreement is a whole lot of numbers and a whole long agreement, but with the memo, I just took two sheets and you see that the total debt that we owe is $4,110,000 with the processing fees for doing this. And then plus the interest, we actually are saving another $11,000. So making it simple, but if you look at that and if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And so those are, yeah, the escrow agreement is just a long, all the documentation that sends to Public Financial Management to start this process, and on December 15th, they'll take the funds. And the, you know, the board resolution is the actual documentation of the board approving the resolution.
So as far as board action, we just need to approve the board resolution, not the escrow agreement?
Yeah, the, no, you're deciding, you know, you're approving...
All of that with the...
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just giving Roger the authority to sign, you know, and giving me the authority to put $4 million so that they can take it, you know, but it's a resolution providing the feasibility of the $13,085,000 general obligation school building refunding bond, Series 2010, is what you're doing. So it's providing that allowance of Roger and I signing, and then they will take the money. Any questions?
Any questions for her? Heidi?
Yes.
Heidi moves that we approve the board resolution. Is there a second? Seconded by, seconded by Greg? Any discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter C, is there a motion to approve the monthly financial report? Motion by Gail. Seconded by Brenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to number five, personnel, is there a motion to approve the hire of Leah Nielsen as ELL teacher for, with a BA Step Zero salary of $19,987.50 for the second semester to conclude at the 15, 16 school year? Motion by Terry. Seconded by Gail. Any discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Oh, Bob? Sorry about that.
You budgeted for this position. We were unable to find a candidate. We did offer, but the contra came back. So this is, Leah is a, will soon be a graduate. She's student teaching with us currently, a new graduate in December here. And so the only comment I would make to this is that the hope would be if she gets certification that maybe we could even start her before that second semester, you know, and we would have to then adjust likely the pay. But, but if we can get her started sooner than that, I'll tell you what, our ELL program, we, we need additional support there. You know, we needed it in, at the beginning of the school year, and we need it as much now. So that's a, that's a position we certainly want to see filled, and we're happy that she's here and looking to move forward on her education and get that ELL certification. We're very happy to have her.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter B, the review of the early retirement process. Sally, you want to touch on that?
In your Google Drive, the early retirement process is listed there for you. Per the negotiated, per negotiations, the board placed $200,000 for early retirement. So the applications for early retirement are to be submitted to my office by December 15th, by the end of the day. And then, letter to the applicants on December 18th will go out with the calculations of the, the payment and the choice whether to accept the process or to reject it, saying, no, you know, I'm not going to retire, accept or reject it. On January 7th, in that letter, they'll be invited to a meeting, not a mandatory meeting, but to answer any questions they might have. Funds going to a 403B, you know, how retirement works, any questions that, you know, how health insurance works, any questions that they might have, I'm happy to meet with them. So I set that meeting time, like I said, it's not mandatory. The following day, January 8th, is the deadline to submit that form, whether they're accepting or rejecting. And then at the January 18th board meeting, that list of who is retiring amount, with the dollar amounts, is given to the board for approval. And then the contracts are sent out on January 21st to their home address. And then with the deadline, seven days, give them a little mail time. So on January 29th, those contracts are to be returned to the central office. And at that time, then we would know the final list of who's early retiring from the district.
Any questions for Sally? None? Moving to, well, we have a school resource officer, but you touched on that. You want...
Really not, unless there's questions about the process.
Moving to number six, policy and procedures. Their motion for the 2016-17, 17-18 school calendar. Motion by Brenda.
It's linked on the bottom. There's two tabs for 16-17 and 17-18. Can I just make a comment?
Yeah. Do you want a second or first? Seconded, there was a motion to approve. We can get a second discussion? Gail?
On the January 17th calendar, you've got February 17th off is no school, but February 20th is a holiday. And I hated that, when there's a bunch, when you've got a holiday off, you know, I mean, why are we taking Friday off when a lot of the parents will have Monday off? Sorry.
When we went through, we do have a collection of staff, that, a committee that, that meets. And one of the, that is one of the things that was, there was a lot of discussion about on President's Day. The thought was that it would, it would serve our students better as an extended break on the 9th and 10th of March, because you have other four-day weekends there. It's just one of those, to be honest, I think just, you know...
But isn't this an issue as a period? We've got to tell you, it is an issue. Why don't they just give 20 of us a M monthly in way that we can do it? I don't know, I think it's an issue. I might have to agree with you. Next year, you should have Friday and Monday off of that.
Correct.
But there's a lot of people that work for government offices and wonder whether they have Monday off.
My opinion, I think those things change from year to year. You can have, you know, as the calendar goes, you're going to have these little idiosyncrasies that one year you do one thing, one year you do a different thing. It's just how, how it works out. For example, we talked about doing the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off. There was, there was a great deal of discussion about that, and ultimately, we decided not to. You know, at the end of the day, you have 175 days you need to be in school. And the calendar, there's only so many options that work. Any, any change you make, any day off you want, there's subsequent reactions to that. I, I think it's a product of some of those idiosyncrasies that happen from calendar to calendar.
Mindy?
I just, I have a question about the process. I mean, I know there's a lot of people around the table, but I noticed both years, we start the week before Labor Day, and we have two full weeks off at Christmas. Right? Am I right?
I think that's close, yes. I don't think there's quite two weeks in one of the...
Nine days.
Like I said, it really just comes down to, they're, they're both, and the other thing we should talk about is, is the approval of a two-year calendar. We did it in the past because of the initiative measure for Labor Day. We wanted to provide some examples. But I'll be honest, I think a two-year calendar is, is great. I like only doing this once. And you have enough information to clearly be able to make a two-year plan. I think you could go three to five years, to be honest with you, but two years is a nice, is a nice length of time to plan a, to plan a calendar. I, I think just like the President's Day example, those are just those idiosyncrasies that come up and, you know, not every calendar is going to look the same every year, but, but like I said, a large group of, of staff did look through that and, you know, we, we have some discussions, move some days around, see what it looks like, and, you know, they're thoughtful as they have those discussions of how their impact is in their building, how the impact is to families and students.
I think they put, I mean, a lot of time into discussing that out and trying to appease everybody when they're doing the calendar, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter B, is there a motion to rescind pictures accompanied by names? E6 policy? Yep, sure.
I, I know this was in my report, but just as a comment, you were rescinding E6 because it becomes part of the next policy, FGA. There's some redundancy there. You wouldn't need that, a separate standalone policy as long as it's part of the new FGA, so it just made sense to remove a redundant policy.
Their motion? Motion by Bob, seconded by Terry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter C, is there a motion to, for the first reading of the Student Education Records and Privacy Policy, FGA, and its subcategories below that, 1 through 10? Motion by Gail. Seconded by, by Mindy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter D, is there a motion to, for the first reading of the School Board Pledge of Ethics, the BA? Motion by Gail. Seconded by Terry. Any discussion? Rob, this is something that came down from the School Board Association as an addition to policies?
It is not a required policy. It's a recommended policy. In my mind, it matched what our expectations are for, for board members, what the community's expectations are for board members. It made sense to codify it in a policy.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter E, is there a motion to rescind surveys of student policies, GCC? Motion by Bob. Seconded by Gail. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter F, is there a motion for the first reading of the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment and Third Party Research on Students' Policy, GCC? And then, motion by Greg. Seconded by Brenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is that modeled...
That's an exhibit.
Of that reading?
That was, that was an exhibit, so you could...
Okay.
If you wanted to prove it separately, or did you prove it last? Was there an assumption of approval?
Assumption of approval with, 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 with F.
Change that.
Moving to number seven, is there a move, a motion to approve the No Cost Tuition Agreement for a ninth-grade Barnes County student to attend Jamestown Public School for 15, 16 school year? Motion by Brenda. Seconded by Terry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All, assuming roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Items for future agenda? Heidi?
I was wondering, it doesn't have to be the next meeting, but sometime when we hear some reports from different people in the district, if we could have a report from our, an informational report from our homeless coordinator. There's some news articles in the paper and stuff, and I thought it'd be good just to have an informational report. Thank you.
Okay. We will certainly do that. Any other items for future agendas? Bob?
It's not an item for future agenda, but when I was making my report, I forgot to add, I think we need, the board should give a thank you to the people that sit on the Health Insurance Committee, especially the, the voting members are, are teachers and administrators and, well, one administrator. And they have had to make a lot of difficult decisions over the year, and they haven't always been popular, decisions...
always been popular, decisions that, anyway, they've kept the Health Insurance Fund in very good shape. And the board needs to thank those people, because it is, it isn't easy. And we appreciate the time that, that the teachers and administrators that sit on that board put in. So just wanted to make sure that got added.
Okay, thank you. Any other items? Meetings to be scheduled, we have the SEC Governing Board meeting on Wednesday, December ninth, two thou, or, at twelve PM. That's teleconference. And then we have the Health Committee meeting Monday, December fourteenth, at three-thirty in the conference room of the district office. And then all, our next board meeting will be January eighteenth. We don't have a first meeting in January, so. With any, another reminder is to right-click on your adjournment and assess our meetings, so. No other business, meetings adjourned. Greg? Yeah, there was no, we don't have any... January eighteenth is our next board meeting, right?
That's not the eighteen.
That's what Sally, that's what Sally had on her...
That's right.
It is, okay. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Because we don't have one on the fourth. No, okay.